Looks like we're ready to go. I'm waiting for the queue. Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for March 17, 2025. For viewers watching at home, some members of the public may be participating via video conference or telephone conference. Number two is please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. The acoustics in here are far better than the other room. Yeah, exactly. Number three, will the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Bus. Commissioner Ferris.
Here.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut is absent. Commissioner McMahon.
Here.
Chair Lanson.
Here. Item four, announcements tonight we have with us Deputy Committee Development Director Fabiola Meliker. Are there any written comments, announcements, or continuances?
There are no comments and no supplemental packets this time.
Okay, now we go on to item five, which is a special presentation. Are you reading Lori and I'm walking over? Mr. Link, or Commissioner Link, would you please join me at the table?
This is a commendation in honor of Justin Link. Whereas on February 23, 2021, City Council appointed Justin Link to the Thousand Oaks Planning Commission as recommended by Councilmember Kevin McNamee. And whereas Justin Link served on the commission until February 11, 2025, during which time he served as Vice Chairperson from February 13, 2023 to February 11, 2025. And whereas during his term with the commission, he attended 45 Planning Commission meetings with 59 public hearings and voted on 150 planning applications encompassing a wide range of residential, mixed-use, commercial, industrial, institutional, and policy and regulatory matters. These included residential multifamily projects at the lakes, Chappelle's Rancho, Canejo Boulevard, Corporate Center Drive, 88 Long Court, 170 Herbs Road, 382 Herbs Road, and a single-family project at 1651 Lynn Road. Mixed-use projects at T.O. Ranch, 2150 West Hillcrest Road, and 500 Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Commercial projects for the Jan's Hotel, Takeda Solar Installation, Medical Offices, Golf Car Sales, Office Buildings, Dog Training Facilities, Restaurants, and Industrial Projects for Warehouse Space Alexandria Biotech Campus, and a Waste Management Dispatch Facility. Institutional projects for a Cancer Center, Navigation Center, Canejo Canyon's Bridge, Improvements at Orchard Gate Park and Canejo Community Park. Wireless Communications Facilities and Policy Regulatory Matters including Municipal Code Amendments for Accessory Dwelling Units, the Inclusionary Housing Program, Columbaria, the General Plan 2045 Update, and 2021-2029 Housing Element, and a new mixed-use zone. And whereas the decisions and planning policies implemented or recommended by the commission during Commissioner Link's tenure have been instrumental in protecting and enhancing the environment of the Canejo Valley for the benefit of all its citizens. Now I, now therefore I, David Newman, Mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby commend Justin Link for the outstanding leadership and commitment to the welfare of the community that he has shown as a member of the City Planning Commission and for his dedicated public service in that role. Signed, David Newman, Mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks.
So I just wanted to actually say a few words with regard to Commissioner Link. One of the great things about this process, and there's other former Planning Commissioners in the room, is that we get a wide array of people from the community, each having different basic understanding, different strengths, different ways of looking at things, and it really brings together a really nice, you know, combination of different people. And Commissioner Link, you had such experience and knowledge with regard to various different things regarding traffic and parking and things that I think some of us would look and go, "What?" You did an amazing job of understanding and synthesizing that work and really going out of your way to make sure the community kind of understood and protecting them in that regard and going through that process. I thoroughly appreciate all your work. You read through everything, which is always hard to do. You were always prepared, and I cannot tell you how much I enjoyed working with you. And again, I appreciate everything you've done. Were there any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Ferris?
Thank you. I too, I just want to commend you for the service you've had over the past four years and just thank you for the opportunity to be able to work with you for the two years that we've overlapped on the commission. I found your engagement, like you were discerning, you were professional, your expertise in traffic and your experience in this area helped to provide extremely well-rounded discussion and understanding of everything that we come. I think it's been mentioned several hearings, we generally all come in with our own particular things that we bring into almost every case. But I think that that helps the commission bring a very well-rounded review over every one of those applications, regardless of how the votes end up falling down. So I just wanted to thank you for your service and have the opportunity to serve with you the past couple of years.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon?
Yes, it's hard to follow. Two very eloquent people. I do also want to say that your expertise in traffic and in the way the cities are run and how they think and how they work has been very helpful. But I also want to add that you are a joy. You just exude happiness and fun and whimsy and it made what we did, which sometimes is very meticulous and tedious, made it a lot more fun. So thank you for that also. And I really did appreciate everything that you brought to the dais with us.
Thank you. Ms. Meliker?
Sure. On behalf of the Community Development Department, I just want to thank you for your commitment in your years of service and your thoughtful decision-making process that really shaped all the countless projects that were read by Lori that you, you know, you had to make a decision and vote along with your fellow planning commissioners. And I want to say that that takes a lot of effort and commitment reviewing the projects and really thinking and bringing that expertise and your perspective that you have. And with that, you know, while we're going to miss you and the commission, I want to encourage you to stay connected and I would like to invite you to continue to participate in our zoning code update. We really appreciate, like I said, your knowledge and expertise and you will be an asset in that process as well.
Thank you. And I know we have one general speaker comment that we'll wait on a second, but since you're there, if there's anything you wanted to say?
Sure. And I'd like to say that this does not constitute a project under CEQA. So anything that I say from here on out is exempt. No, I was telling my wife and my son before we left home hurriedly because I was running late from work. But the, this is the first tie that I wore. It was actually going to start off with maybe some song lyrics as we did our sound checks on Zoom, which is one of my favorite memories, but I, so many. I think I was going to do Rocket Man. She packed my bags last night, but no, anyway. So, no, I, thinking back from the beginning, I think it was, it was interesting that Kevin and I appreciate that he did took a trance on somebody that normally is on this side of the dais to move to the other side of the dais. And I'm used to being on this side, providing the information, and then role reversal was certainly a change of pace, especially going through a general plan update. But I can imagine how maybe fearful some members of staff might have been seeing that role reversal and me asking the questions that maybe getting into the weeds just a little bit too much. So first of all, my apologies to Brad Mohab and Masood and Nader for, and certainly a big thank you to them for dealing with me, especially as we got into discussions about retaining walls and drainage and various other things. It probably never really came up at Planning Commission because it's not things that we should necessarily get into the weeds about, but certainly something that I loved getting into the weeds about and thinking, maybe is this project really that viable? So I don't know. But I definitely recall that retaining wall at that one house on the West Lake Island, or West Lake Lake on the island. That was, that was a fun one. But I would be remiss in not thanking all the planners that brought projects before us. I can't say enough about how professional and how well-prepared every single one of them were. And I know I'm going to miss a few names and I apologize if I do, but Carlos, and these are not in order of, they're my favorites. These are actually in alphabetical order because I am an engineer after all. Carlos, Ian, Kristin, Justine, Azar, Scott, Will, and of course Steve Kearns. And if I've missed a few names, I apologize. But again, just the professionalism of the staff of the City of Thousand Oaks cannot be undersold. Oh gosh, who else? Everybody up here. Fabiola and Patrick, just absolutely trusted advisors, and Kari from the years before. Thank you so much for answering our questions. Thank you for taking your time for all of those pre-Planning Commission hearings so that we knew, or at least we looked like we knew what we were talking about. And to all of you, to David before and Nelson, if he's out there watching. Oh, you are? Right. My goodness, I didn't even see you. My gosh, I've got tunnel vision. And here you are. That is true, but you're sitting down. So it's been a joy. It's been a joy. This was something I probably could not have imagined that, you know, four years of my life. But it certainly was an enriching experience and you all made it that way. Again, it's already been said and I can beat a dead horse, but everybody brought something to the table. Nelson was our resident historian who could tell us what was on that piece of property before it became the lakes or where Safari World, or whatever it was called. Jungleland, thank you. What it could have been in being able to weigh that as we were making our decisions. And David, I'm going to say it again, I'm sorry, but making sure that as we were going to the general plan, there were no shenanigans and that everybody's voice was represented and we weren't being bombed or spammed by IP addresses from who knows where to shape what is supposed to be the community plan for the residents of the City of Thousand Oaks. To Sharon, I, there's just not enough that I can say. I thank you for looking out for active transportation. You're always about bikes and making sure that we were providing for bikes. And not to say that you are a tenured person, but you're tenured on the board, obviously. The institutional knowledge has been absolutely enriching to me. So I thank you. Mick, you are our Measure E. Is God the wrong word? But without, I mean, I honestly could not have even imagined what the depth of your knowledge with respect to Measure E and how it affects the city and keeping, making sure that we are following what the voters had voted for was just a resource to us all. And Mr. Lanson, and I wish Marcel was here, but Mr. Lanson, thank you for always asking whether the developer was going to build their project, even though we knew he wasn't going to. But most of all, for keeping all of our applicants honest and making sure that, yeah, they knew what they were getting into every time they went through all 100 to 200 of those conditions that we were applying on those projects. And maybe you might have missed something, and I think there were a couple of times that they did. So again, keeping those honest. And of course, last but not least, to my wife Suzanne and my son Daniel. This was a commitment on your part. I gave up weekends reviewing staff reports and plans and various other things. So that was no small sacrifice on your part. So thank you very much for allowing me to do this for the last four years. And thank you all.
We're going to actually have a picture in a second here. I think what we all appreciated at some point was seeing some of the staff that sits all the way up at the top and you're questioning, making sure that pick almost every single one of them at some point have to come down and answer some questions, no matter how much they didn't want to. So, oh wait, he's got one more thing to add.
I almost forgot. I can't believe I forgot. Ms. Gore and Mary Kate. Who can, who can read the project descriptions like Lori? I mean, honestly, but no, both very shining faces and the first face you see when you come into chambers. So again, did not want to forget you both. Thank you very much.
So like I said, we're going to take a picture. We do have one general comment. This guy named Newman, Mayor Newman. Could you please go to the podium and please state your name and city of residence is what they tell me I have to ask you?
Good evening. I am David Newman of Thousand Oaks. I want to begin tonight with an apology. That was a nice commendation that city staff wrote up. We are lucky to have such a competent and deep bench on our staff, but there was an omission there. The commendation failed to note Commissioner Link's encyclopedic knowledge of rock and roll lyrics and his use of those in sound checks. So I hope, I hope Mr. Link, you can find it in your heart to forgive us for that really grave omission. Apologies. We served together on the Planning Commission for a number of years. I'm not sure how many, but it was a while. And two years? It seemed like longer. Yeah, yeah. So it seemed like about 20 because it was COVID. But, but what I really appreciated about Justin is not just that, I think I used that word shenanigans once in a hearing, and Justin picked that up and ran with it. And I mean that as a compliment in the highest possible way. Because while you were an ardent advocate for property rights, you also balanced that with community benefits in the best possible way. And whether we voted together, which we often did, and sometimes we didn't, but I never doubted that you had the community's very best interests at heart when, in every vote. So that's, that's thing one of two I want to praise you for. The second thing is even more important is there's been some reference to this already about your attention to detail. The job of a planning commission is to implement our land use policies. And boy, did you implement. You were really, really good, not just on traffic things, of course, but also on every facet of every project. And I really appreciated that attention to detail and getting, sweating the details is what made all of us better commissioners and made for our residents a better city. So on behalf of our city government, thank you for that. Very grateful. And I want, as a closing note, I just want to say to your family, you should be very grateful to your dad for all the work he did, as we are. Thank you.
I remember as we were doing COVID, Commissioner Bus was chair and then I, or I was and then you took over. It was interesting, our sound checks would go through and each of us would get maybe five, 10 seconds. Justin would start reading. I think he got like a minute and a half because he would keep reading the song lyrics and whoever was in the control room was like, "No, we're going to let him keep going." So it was, it was fantastic. So with that, I think we would like to get up and come up and take a picture. So with that, we go on to our next item, which is item six. And for that, Commissioner Bus, would you please join me at the speaker's podium to be sworn in by the City Clerk?
Good evening. Do you solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies and domestic? And that you will bear true faith, true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the State of California? That you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion? And that you will well and faithfully discharge of the duties upon which you are about to embark?
I do.
Congratulations.
All right. So with that, I would like to, so some of these people, this probably introduction is not necessary, especially with the ones sitting right here in the front row. But I had a great chance to sit down and talk with Karen. Sorry, Commissioner Bus, gotta be that way. And going through some of her history, Commissioner Bus is a University of California, San Diego graduate, earned her MBA at Pepperdine Graziano School of Business. She's a registered investment advisor. She has a successful career in finance over the She has a successful career in finance over the last two decades and serves on the Board of Senior Concerns. She's an annual supporter of TO Arts and various other nonprofit organizations. And the time I had to talk to her, I think she is just fantastic in terms of bringing something to this commission, her understanding, her ability to get along with people, her ways of looking at things. I think she'll be fantastic. So I'm welcoming you to this commission. Thank you for being here. I'm trying to see if I should let other commissioners, do you want to say a few words?
I just want to say I look forward to the next four years serving the community and working with the fellow commissioners. And happy St. Patrick's.
Any other commissioner like to say any words? Commissioner McMahon?
I just want to formally congratulate you, and I do look forward to working with you, as I said to you at Senior Concerns, I think it was. So I'm glad you're here.
Commissioner Ferris?
I just want to offer my congratulations and look forward to working with you as well. If you need anything, let us know.
All right. So let's go to item number, I guess, 6C. Deputy Community Development Director Meliker, Secretary of the Planning Commission. Will you now open the nominations for Chair of the Commission?
I would like to open the nominations and election of Chair of the Planning Commission for 2025. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Ferris.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, the Planning Commission Secretary, take a vote.
Commissioner Bus?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut is absent. Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Chair Lanson?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0. Tyler Kettlehut absent.
We now switch plates.
Let me see. First off, well, first off, I just want to thank the commission for their, their support in the vote. I do also want to ask at this point, the next item on the agenda is nomination elections for Vice Chair. Normally for the tradition, Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut likely would be nominated for Vice Chair. Do we want to elect her in her absence, or do we, is it proper to potentially wait for the next meeting and have that? I'd like to get a sense from the commission and staff.
Well, let me just say that I don't think there's any, any violation of electing a person to this position as Vice Chair if that person's not present for tonight. With that said, I mean, you guys can decide if you want to move it to another time, but it's certainly you can do it tonight if that's what you decided to do.
What is the commission's preference?
I'm fine going ahead with it tonight.
Okay. All right. Then let me go ahead and open the nominations for Vice Chair of the Planning Commission.
I would nominate Commissioner Kettlehut.
Great. Are there any other nominations? If not, I'll consider them closed. If the secretary could please call the roll.
Commissioner Bus?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanson?
Yes.
Chair Ferris?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0. Commissioner Tyler, Vice Chair Tyler Kettlehut absent.
That's great. And we're switching plates. Very efficient, well-prepared. Next on the agenda is public comments. Now's the time for public comment. At this time, any person may address the commission regarding a city planning matter that is not on the evening's agenda. Should the commission wish to discuss an issue raised by a member of the public, the issue will be referred to staff for scheduling on a future agenda. Anyone who would like to speak under public comments must fill out a speaker card in chambers or click Request to Speak on the agenda to receive instructions before the public comments portion of the agenda is called. Speakers' remarks should be addressed to the commission as a whole and not to an individual commissioner or staff member unless otherwise provided by the commission. Speakers are limited to five minutes, and the screen will show you the remaining time you have. Do we have any public comment cards? Great. We have one speaker. Possibly two. Ty Gutierrez. Which button? Thank you. Councilmember?
Thank you. My name is Connie Ty Gutierrez, and I reside in Thousand Oaks, and I would love to make a comment on Commissioner Bus's appointment. I personally am very grateful for the opportunity to appoint you to this position and your readiness to accept the invitation. I think there are several in the room that have served in this capacity before and understand that it is not an easy lift, as Commissioner Link said, it's weekends, and it is an ask of our families as well when we give in service in this capacity. And so I'm very honored that you took the opportunity and my invitation, and I look forward to how you work with your fellow commissioners. And I really, I'm just really honored to, to have you as my commissioner and working to the benefit of our community collective with your fellow commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have one more. David Newman, you spoke on five. You're fine. Thanks. Okay. Next, we have the consent calendar for the minutes of January 27, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Do any of the fellow commissioners have any comments or a motion to approve the consent calendar?
And I have a correction. I'm sorry. Okay, on page three, the two votes, they're 5-0, that's correct, but Commissioner Ferris, Chair Ferris and Tyler Kettlehut, Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut were marked as absent, but they were present.
Yes, we were. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Commissioner Lanson?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Great. Will the secretary please prepare us for a vote?
Commissioner Bus?
I abstain.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanson?
Yes.
Chair Ferris?
Yes.
Motion carries 3-0. Commissioner Bus abstaining, and Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut absent.
Okay, minutes are approved. Next, Planning Commission public hearings. We have no public hearings this evening. Number 10, department reports. There are no department reports. Commission comments and AB 1234 reports. Now's the time for commission comments and/or any AB 1234 reports. Are there any comments by my fellow commissioners? Seeing none, we'll go to staff update. Ms. Zalela Meliker, are there any follow-up items, announcements, or upcoming issues?
Yes. Tomorrow, City Council will be meeting for goal setting session. Tomorrow, March 18th. On March 25th, the City Council will have a department report on the 2024 General Plan and Housing Element Annual Progress Report. This is done annually and is basically to, it's kind of reporting how many units have been approved, constructed, so it's a very informative report. And also, there will be two CEQA consultant contracts that will be presented also to City Council. One is for the downtown master plan, and one is for a mixed-use project at 195 East Hillcrest Drive, along with a second reading of the ADU ordinance update to address new state laws, as you guys heard, the commission heard on February 25th. Other items coming up for Planning Commission, there are no items scheduled for March 24th meeting, but on April 7th, there will be a department report on the capital improvement program, general plan consistency determination. On April 28th, there will be a public hearing for 15 industrial buildings at the intersection of Conejo Center Drive and Ranch Conejo Boulevard, and a department report on the General Plan and Housing Element Annual Progress Report. And that will be it.
Great. Thank you for the update. Next on the agenda is adjournment. Thank you all. We'll now adjourn to the next meeting of March 24, 2025, 6:00 p.m. Please join us for some refreshments. Thanks.